Let me get Counselor Forward on the phone. Hit the wrong button again.
It was funny to see that it's number 10, but that's on every agenda.
Is it?
It just looks different. That's where in case there's in camera discussion, you have to have this party to regulate.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine.
My bad.
We tabled it till next week.
Hello?
Andrew.
Hey.
Hello, Andrew.
We're ready to be open.
Excellent.
I just gotta log back in because I hit the wrong button twice. Which apparently I'm fairly good at. The other counselor is here.
Actually, Andrew, that was me dying to get out of here and crying.
Yeah. Counselor Gibb.
Okay, so let's get that out of the way on the Blue Jays then. Where are we at?
Twelve-two.
Twelve-two. It just seems like the going up about every...
It's getting worse.
It is. That's not pretty, folks. That's just the way it is. All right, let's get into our committee of the whole meeting then. Item, there's no agenda for public work, so item number two is public safety firefighter wages.
Basically, what you have in front of you is firefighter wages for the month of July, August, and September. For July firefighter wages were $4,863.22, August $7,160.65, and September $4,406.60. This is pretty normal in the realm of what we normally do. Usually, we do them every two months if we can. This one, there was one lagging behind. So we will require a resolution of council in the amount of $16,484.7 to cover the fees for the firefighting wages for the months of July, August, and September.
Any discussion? Excellent. They will have a resolution to pay those. Applying in development, 3.1 KRC Outdoor Rink Location memo from the REC Director.
Yeah, and it's basically saying that the committee or the KRC Board is adopting the recommendation of the Long Term Planning Committee to locate the multi-use outdoor rink on the north side of the Wellness Centers. You can see on the resolution, they will be supplying us with an additional resolution or one revising this. They carried the motion, however, when they went forward against, they have it reversed. So in speaking with Amber, she will provide us with another resolution. However, they are all in agreeance that it will still be the north side. And this was a question that had come up on several times as to where it was going to be located. So this is basically saying, yes, this is where we're going.
Okay, any comments? Counselor Brock?
On reading this, and I know we talked about it earlier and whatnot, and it was in a different location and whatnot, but when I started realizing they want to build an outdoor rink, they want to build an outdoor warm-up building and all that stuff, I'm wondering whether putting it in this location so close to the main arena and everything else, did they have any other options or whatever to spread it around the community so the service is more readily available to others? Or is it just going to become another ice surface for existing users?
Sitting on KRC, I would say no, right? We want to have a hub of recreation activities. Still have support services. Spreading it around, we don't get that. We have one location, only recreation activities. It was clearly in mind, it was open to public. It's not going to be taken over by one group or practice or that sort of thing.
Right, I guess then with regard to that, because I'm assuming part of the reason for putting it there is to have access to the Zamboni and whatnot, or not?
Yes and no. They are kind of clear with that. From the Long Term Planning Group, which I sit on, I wasn't in agreement with moving it, but we all can agree we want to do that. So we have to adhere to what KRC's recommending.
Yeah.
Or why don't we have KRC, right?
I don't know.
It's really what it comes down to, right? If council is going to overrule them, then why don't we do it instead?
Well, I'm not suggesting necessarily we overrule them, but I need to understand more of the rationale for why it's there and what's the benefit versus, because it's a substantial cost, as I understand.
It's not a cost, sorry.
What's not a cost in town?
If I may, to answer your question, it does say so in the note from Nelson Fulford, higher visibility to the public, access to immediate parking, control by the Wellness Center staff, limited supervision and lockup, elevated sense of security by users, more removed from the residential properties to the south, noise considerations during the summer use. I think those are the answers, those are the reasons why they want to locate it where they do. And I guess that that is the decision of Kelsey Recreation. I'm of the same opinion as Counselor Gibb. If all decisions of Kelsey REC are going to come before council, then I really fail to see the need of having Kelsey Recreation Commission. If we're going to be overruling them or changing minds or doing this every time, it kind of defeats the purpose of having that commission. Okay, so any other comments? Okay, so just now things were reversed, so what will be coming to council meeting next week?
Basically, this is sharing the plan.
Oh, this is for information purposes?
Yes.
Okay.
And what they will be doing is resubmitting a new resolution to us. That is very clear on this, was that approved?
Okay, we're going to move on then. Timing is everything. 4.1, the PAW Friendship Center Request for Assistance. I believe Renee Kastrikoff is actually going to be here to do that. Hello, Renee? Please step forward and state your name for our record, if you would, please.
I brought also a shelter manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if everybody could just, just for the record, just if you could state your name, all three of you, please. Shirley, we'll start with you.
Shirley Brozky. I'm board member in the PAW Friendship Center, treasurer.
Renee Kastrikoff, executive director of the PAW Friendship Center.
Okay.
Marilyn Mayle.
Perfect. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So you're requesting financial assistance. Tell us more.
Okay. The PAW Friendship Center has been struggling for a number of years to operate Oscar's Place independently. And we have been seeking other means of funding to try to get into the 24-hour basis and to also repair and replace much of the equipment and furnishings that are required in the external rooms in particular, so that those rooms can be used as of this time they are not being utilized. And we had applied to the homeless as partnering strategy, and we received a letter back, I should probably, I can provide it if necessary. We had received a letter back indicating that they were not going to fund us because we were 100% reliant on the funding. And it suggested that we look for partnerships and not just partnerships in terms of letters to support, but actual partnerships in our community that would be able to contribute to the project and contribute to the operations. So with that, we are here requesting contribution from the town of PAW. Contribution can be in many forms. Doesn't necessarily have to be hard cash, but it has to equate something along those lines. Something that could normally be an expense for us, but if the town would find any kind of contribution of something that would alleviate some of the expense, that would be considered the same sort of thing.
Perhaps I missed it in the letter, but is there?
I'm talking to you.
No, no, I mean, I've got it in front of me, but is there anything in there that says the percentage of what you, if you're looking for, say you're looking for $100,000 on this grant, so is there an amount that they're saying you have to look after yourself before you, I mean, they turned it back to you, say you can't have 100%? What can you have, 99%?
They didn't indicate, but it was put to me by the project officer to know this as a partnership strategy, that the more partnerships that we have, the more chances of us.
Okay, so this is not your first go at this sort of thing? You're well-versed in it. How many partners are you looking for and what sort of amounts are you looking for?
We don't actually have an amount in mind. I haven't actually done up a new budget for a new proposal because we have to submit a proposal, and the conditions are going to be somewhat different in terms of the length of time that the projects will be, to what amount of money could apply. So we're kind of kind of regaining the whole proposal, so I haven't seen the figures, we haven't put the call yet, but it's coming in December or January this year.
Right.
So we're going to have all of that, like that. I've also been meeting with representatives from OCEAN, and I've met with the management department, and we are going to be approaching some of the services to the town of PAW.
Okay. Counselor Zlinski?
That was probably my biggest question was who else you approached? So you've approached OCEAN, have you approached the RMC?
Not yet.
Have you thought about approaching some of the surrounding communities in the PAW? Some of the reserves around the PAW, because it's also a part of it, like I'm just trying to think of trying to get as many people to partner it, to the homeless shelter as soon as possible. I want nothing more than to see the whole program go, and I'm just trying to think of the best way to get as many partners and get it the best I can.
Absolutely. Yeah, any relations with the central others, do you have any worries?
Okay. I know we had met not, I guess I was there as counselor, but it wasn't part of council, I guess. It was just a meeting when we were trying to deal with some of the chaplaincy program and that sort of thing. I know when we had those discussions, you had indicated that you guys were having some problem getting some grant due because of some of the tax liability issues that the Friendship Center itself has. Is that still an ongoing thing?
No, that's been resolved.
That's been resolved. So you're able to access all the funding?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and so what, you haven't received any of that funding that you used to receive when you were eligible for it?
I'm not sure if you mentioned it.
Well, I thought you guys were receiving additional funding from the federal government before, and that you were...
Yeah, that was like seven years ago, like from my time, probably five years ago. I think five years ago, we've seen another one.
But I know that that was a big help in keeping the center operating 24 hours a day, correct? So have you guys been able to apply for that funding and secure any of that funding?
That's what we're wanting to apply for.
That's what this is?
That's what this is?
That's what this is?
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think, and let me know if I'm off base, is that you've spent the last couple of years paying off debt owed by the Friendship Center, so you don't really have, you haven't, you're not at the stage yet where you're applying for Friendship Center funds to move it back to, for lack of a better term, the good old days. So is that a fair assessment?
We're still a ways away in terms of financial, you'll see, you'll see it demonstrated in our financial statements that we still have some debt. And the board of directors does have a plan that they are implementing to address that.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we are free to apply for funding through, you know, the federal government, provincial government, so we are certainly moving ahead of that as well.
Right.
A significant portion of that debt actually does come from other areas picking up over expenditures from the homeless shelter.
That's fine. I was just more referring to, the debts of the Friendship Center are a completely separate issue. I was just referring to the homeless, the homeless shelter being able to apply for funding and that sort of thing.
So what is the timeframe then for us to say, hey, we decided to be a partner?
I'm looking at a timeframe of early December of finding out who all of our partners will be and what they can contribute, because the call for proposals will be issued, they say, either in December or early January. So I'd like to be in a position for the Friendship Center to kind of hit the ground running with it immediately. The proposal itself, you know, like I said, it's going to have to be basically revamped and redone because the amount of money that we can apply for is going to be different, so it's going to kind of reduce, you know, some of the things that we had planned. But the biggest part of it for us is getting those partnerships, establishing, you know, other sources of resourcing for the shelter to go in with, to be a partner in the proposal with us.
Can you give us a ballpark of how much you're going to be applying for? Like, I know you said it'll change based on the request for proposals, but just, I mean, so we have an idea that if we decide we're going to partner and provide 10%, we know what that 10% looks like.
I don't know for fact what the call is going to come out as, but it's rumored that it's around $200,000 for a period of three years each year.
$200,000 per year?
$200,000 per year for three years.
And this will then allow you to operate a 24/7 facility?
Well, it wouldn't just be for operations, because that's not the intent of the money. The intent of the money is to look at transitional housing, and it's not for emergency purposes, so we have to build in some programming, which we would do during the day, so that we have our doors open during the day and our facilities would be accessible to those who need them. And then we would have the external rooms, like all those rooms on the outside that people would be utilizing for transitional housing and stuff like that. So that's what that $200,000 would be geared towards on those lines. Marilyn, is there anything you want to add to that?
Well, I get a lot of calls around single parents' families, and because we, our women are not being utilized, I have to turn and wave, and I have to tell them that we need to be there.
So the question I have is, right now, you're opening 10 hours a day, right?
Yes.
Seven days a week, is that correct? And it costs you $160,000 a year to do that?
Yes.
So if you move to 24/7, you have all those rooms or beds for 26 people, how much is that going to cost? Because that's what I don't understand here, what the asset is going to be or where, like, is it going to be half a million dollars to do that? So we have an idea of where we're going.
Actually, I have a brand-new budget for a 24/7 operation in my home. Would that be in the real? I'm actually trying to work with the province on the 24/7 piece right now. The total that we would need is $464,000. Sorry? $464,880.25.
So basically, right now, you've got a budget of $160,000, correct?
Sorry? A budget of?
Right now, you've got a budget...
Just about 160, yes.
$160,000. And then this money that you're going to be applying for this grant that you're going to be applying for is over and above the 160 that you currently receive?
It's actually different from the 160. The 160 is for emergency shelter purposes.
Yeah.
The homelessness partnering strategy is to basically look at things like transitional housing and providing programs to those who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at is, you're going to get the 160 regardless, correct?
Yes.
And the 200 for three years that you're applying for, whatever it happens to, is above and beyond, correct?
Yes, and that would, well, it wouldn't be above and beyond. It would be above and beyond in the sense of it's additional money. However, the intent of that money is not to just open the shelter doors or to have people like for sleeping and stuff like that. There has to be programming, there has to be transitional housing attached to it. It's not just for homelessness.
Right, so roughly, you have 160, you need 460 to get going, ballpark, right? So you'd need $300,000. Saying you're going to apply for $200,000, what I'm hearing is that you can utilize some of that funding for your operation if you do these programs, but you can't say, ah, I need $300,000, here's 200 gone. Because that's not what I'm hearing from you guys, right? So I guess for me, I'd need to know what portion of that 200,000, if you get it, can you take away from the $300,000 that you need to get it to a 24/7 and 24/7 operation, right? So then you can break it down, and then you can come to town and say, well, I need $50,000 a year to partner with these other people, and I need $50,000 from OCEAN, and $25,000 from, whatever the numbers are, so you can work it back and figure it out.
The $200,000 does not come into play with that $460,000.
So you'd be...
So you're saying you need 300, okay, that's fine. So we're back, we need $300,000 to make this happen, right?
To make it a 24/7 operation, that's what we're looking at.
That's your plan, was it not, to make it a 24/7?
Yes, yes. But that's not the plan through the homelessness partnering strategy. The homelessness partnering strategy has a different set of criteria.
Right, so it doesn't come into play here at all?
It does. Well, it does and it doesn't, because if we can get those exterior rooms fixed up, then it becomes transitional housing that takes people off the streets and provides them with a place, right?
Yeah.
If we get that 200,000 from homelessness partnering strategy, it provides us with the ability to hire staff for daytime or evening to be in the shelter to provide programs and services.
But at the same time, you're also watching over the shelter, because you need to have somebody there anyway, correct?
Well, yes and no. We couldn't actually really do that, because it would go against the conditions of the HPS.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'd be at risk of having our funding pulled or not renewed or whatever. So we have to follow the guidelines.
So is there other sources of funding other than this HPS? Like, it sounds like you gave it great, but you don't, you still have that $300,000.
There aren't any other sources of funding at this time that we're aware of.
Okay, so you're making the rounds, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right, Counselor Brock.
I was just going to ask one quick question. Do you have a business proposal, for lack of a better word, that would break out some of the activities you're proposing for this 24/7 operation and where resources come from and whatnot? So I don't really have a sort of that clear picture of what it is you're attempting to do, because of course, you're doing different activities and going to different sources of funding and whatnot. So when all is said and done, what would be the end result and what do you need to do to arrive at it and break down the cost? And here, I'm not thinking a big, long report, but I'm looking at a page or two that just sort of breaks it out, so at a glance, I say, oh, okay, now I see what they're trying to do and where the shortfalls are and where the, you know, where we may be able to help out.
Actually, the proposal is this partnering strategy proposal, and we won't be able to do that until the call comes out, because they don't know if they're going to be looking at changing any of the questions or criteria. But basically, what we're asking for here today is for partnership for that proposal for the, through the homelessness partnering strategy. We're hoping to apply for roughly $200,000 from the federal government over, for each for three years. And fix all the exterior rooms and also fix some of the internal rooms, and we also need to be able to put a shower on the inside, because people who don't have access to one of the rooms, you know, we still need to have a shower room, and to upgrade some of the facilities and some of the sleeping quarters. And to also look at providing programs and services, you know, either, you know, mental health, addictions, like those are probably a couple of the larger ones, variety of programs like that, and pre-employment, you know, training and stuff like that. So that would be a part of that business plan that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just to give you a little more insight, I don't know how many of you have been to the shelter and seen it. When they built it, they got the outside doors. Those doors should be inside, so those are some of the problems that need to be alleviated. So in order to that, we need to, they need to be fixed, so there's doorways from the inside, because right now, what was happening was you let somebody into a room and they let all their friends in, and you had no control over it, so without running around outside all night. So now, the center needs doors to go in and out of, as opposed to the outside, okay? That's some of the problems that they have in there.
I also understand that there is going to be a fundraiser, I believe it's going to take place early in the new year. So that would be looked at, you know, if we had an idea of what costs were involved and what potential is there, that could be seen as a, is that, could be seen as a gift in kind?
Well, that would be a partnership for the one year, you know, if it was predicted that we do it over three years, and that would be a contribution, yeah, and a partnership.
Okay, so...
I just have one more thing to say.
Sure.
Everybody's really under the wrong impression. When this homeless shelter was set up, it was supposed to be a community involvement, and I believe they had a board at one time that included the RHA, the MMF, Friendship Center, and I don't know, there's a few others. And it's too bad Judy couldn't be here, because she's the one that has the background and could really speak on that, because she was on it. And then, for some reason or another, that board kind of fell apart, and it ended up back at the Friendship Center, and everybody thinks it's Friendship Center's problem. It's really a community thing.
It is a community problem, of course it is.
You know, so I just thought I'd bring that to light.
Yeah.
So the Friendship Board runs all the operations for Oscar's Place?
Yes.
Have you guys thought of maybe putting a call up there to start a new board or a sub-board or something of that nature? A sub-board under the Friendship Center or striking a completely new board just for Oscar's Place or...
That has come up, and because we're a new board ourselves that we're brought on, and trying to get what we perceive here to assist Renee to get things on board, and this is one of the problems, and those are some of the things that are going to let Renee carry on with that one.
Actually, I think the Friendship Center would like nothing more than there to be a new board to step up and take over the operations of Oscar's Place and for it to be actually a community represented board. The Friendship Center does not own homelessness, nor does the Friendship Center own the problems or the social issues that come along with it, but it's the Friendship Center that's looking after it, and it's, we're really struggling. So we need to engage as many community partners as we can.
If I may, I don't see it, like, as a community, I think we do have some responsibility, absolutely, it's in our community, this is an issue, we have to deal with it. But this really is, needs to be something that is looked at in a more regional sense. The communities that surround this community need to play a role, whether that be financial or whatever. And so I think that we, as a council, need to sit down and have a chat.
I agree.
Because it's not, I think it needs to be said that this council, this community, contributes about $20,000 towards the chaplaincy program. This community, cost shared on the Community Ambassador Program of $15,000, $15,000 from the federal government. I think it's safe to assume that perhaps as much as $20,000 per year from the public safety officers' wages would go to issues dealing with those that would use that facility. So, you know, we're in it pretty deep already, and I'm not suggesting for a moment that we're not prepared to get more involved, but I really need to see others coming on board. I need evidence of that.
I agree. And if I can't force others to come on board, then what?
Well, then that's a different case, isn't it? Then we have another, we have another discussion.
Okay.
I, there's not, I don't think there's a person in this community who doesn't see the need for a properly-run facility. I just, it just, it tears me to shreds in December, in January, in February, to see them outside, it just tears me to shreds, and...
Or even now at 7:00 in the morning when the shelter closes and it's raining.
Yeah.
And they don't have anywhere to go.
Yeah.
And anywhere they do go, they're kicked out.
Yeah.
You know, bathrooms in town are locked, there's nowhere to go, nothing, I mean, yeah.
Well, there's reasons for that though, right? So, you know, let's not see, let's see how cruel and horrible we can be today.
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
No, I know that.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just trying to convey, you know, how important it is that we, as a community, help those who are most vulnerable.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to convey.
Yeah, you know what, we had, you were at a meeting that I was at last week, that the MLE put together, and there was a lot of talk about, you know, we're looking at bringing in this kind of a program and that, you know, that maybe we should be more involved, maybe, and, you know, and I was a little harsh, I'll admit, in my comments, that that's all fine and dandy, folks, but at the end of the day, it costs, and there's money. And I look around the table, and I only see one, per, one organization that's contributing financially besides yourselves. I mean, the efforts that you guys are putting in is...
I agree, and if I can't force others to come on board, then what?
Well, then that's a different case, isn't it? Then, then we, then we have another, we have another discussion.
Okay.
I, uh, there's not, I don't think there's a person in this community who doesn't see the need for a properly run facility. I, I just, uh, it, it just, it tears me to shreds, uh, in December, in January, in February, you see them outside, it just tears me to shreds, um, and...
Or even now, at seven o'clock in the morning, when the shelter closes and it's raining?
Yeah.
And they don't have anywhere to go, and anywhere they do go, they're kicked out?
Yeah.
You know, bathrooms in town are locked, there's nowhere to go, nothing, I mean, yeah.
Well, there's reasons for that, though, right? So, you know, it's not see, let's see how cruel and horrible we can be today.
Well, that's not what I'm saying, Joe.
No, I know that, I know.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just trying to convey, you know, how important it is that we as a community help those who are most vulnerable, and that's what I'm trying to convey.
Yeah, you know what, we had, you were at a meeting that I was at last week, uh, that the MLE put together, and, um, there was a lot of talk about, you know, well, we're looking at bringing in this kind of a program, and that, you know, that maybe we should be more involved, maybe, and, uh, you know, and I, I was a little harsh, I'll admit, um, in, in my comments, that, that's all fine and dandy, folks, but at the end of the day, it, it, it costs, and there's money, and I look around the table, and I only see one per, one, one, one organization that's contributing financially besides yourselves. I mean, the efforts that you guys are putting in is astronomical, it's, uh, it's above and beyond, um, but, uh, you know, before, uh, before we ask our ratepayers to contribute more, that, um, you know, I need to know that, that, that we're, we're, we're part of an organi, we're, we're part of a group that's moving this together.
Absolutely, you will not be the only ones being asked, we certainly will be asking others, I mean, the more partners we have on board, the better, and the more you have, the less everybody has to, to try to contribute, because I know that, I know there isn't a lot of money, and I know it only stretches so far, and I know every time you turn around, there's something that needs to be fixed, something that needs to be done, I totally get that, you know, like, even in an organization, you know, we only have so much money, but there's so much need, right?
Right.
So...
Okay, we're on the same team.
Can I just, I'll make a, a comment, or maybe suggestion, is that, like, I don't know, maybe a PowerPoint presentation, or something a little bit more concrete, because I mean, we have different groups and organizations, the museum, the library, the recycling center, um, the chaplaincy, all those people that come to us every year that we give grants to, and when they come to us, they come to us with an annual operations plan, so we know exactly the bang we're getting for a buck, to put it bluntly, right? So, like, the library comes and they show us, like, this is our budget for the year, this is how much we spend on office supplies, this is how much we spend on wages, et cetera, et cetera, and I realize that that's a little bit hard, because you don't really know exactly what you're going to have to ask for money for until they put out the request for proposals, but I'm sure you kind of have an idea, and even putting together some of the services and stuff that you guys are already running, and the programming and stuff that you're already running, because, I mean, some people, they think homeless shelter, and they think, you know what I mean, like, you guys are giving out soup and sandwich at lunch, and that's kind of all you're doing, right? Like, there's kind of that stigma out there, so especially when you're going to different organizations and service groups and stuff like that, just to have a little bit, you know, tell them what you're already doing and what your plans are, like, you know, the different programming and stuff that you're wanting to run, and what the money would be used for, like, this is how much it's gonna cost to repair those transitional units, so that they can be up and running, um, because I mean, for us, we have the taxpayers to, to, um, report to, like, we have to, we have to go back to them and say, this is what the money was spent on, like, we have to be able to explain every dollar that we spent, right? So, I mean, it's a little bit hard for us to say, yeah, we're gonna give you 20,000 dollars a year, partner with 20,000 dollars a year, when we don't really know exactly what that money is, is going to be utilized for, um, and I mean, that's something that's gonna come up during budget deliberations, right? Like, we're gonna be talking about budgets right away, um, we're gonna be trying to find, um, money for different grants and different programs and, and all that sort of stuff, so if we could have something a little bit more concrete, I think that would, that would help a lot, because like I said, any other organization that we give granting money to comes to us, and we know, you know, maybe not exactly what that money is, is going to be used for, but we get an overall picture of, you know, say we give the chaplaincy, we give the chaplaincy 20,000 dollars, and the chaplaincy comes to us and shows us, this is how much money we get in a year, and this is what we spend it on, so we know that where that 20,000 dollars is going, um, I just think that, I mean, for us, that's a question that always comes up, right? Like, where's, where's the money going?
Oh, of course.
Again, we have taxpayers to answer to.
I've never been here before, I had no idea what to expect, I've sent an email asking for my presence and to bring three years' worth of financial statements, and so that's what we did. If I had known that a presentation would be most beneficial, we would have provided one, and, in the future, we'll make sure that we will definitely have something like that put together.
You did bring a presentation?
And dollars earmarked in terms of, this is where we would actually put the money and stuff, so, for sure.
Yeah, it, it's probably, um, you know, just, because you, you, I, I don't know if we're stop number one on your, on your list, or where we, where we fit into the list, but, you know, like, it probably would be helpful to you and your group if you had that kind of presentation to make as you go along.
Kind of like what Counselor Rock said, like, a business plan, not, not a business plan, because you're not running a business, but, um, like, a, almost like a generic presentation that you can bring to people like Rotary and Kinsman, and, and, you know, OCN and the RM, when you go to present to their councils and stuff like that.
Yeah, unfortunately, our staffing, resourcing is fairly low right now, um, I, I only get paid ten and a half hours a week right now for the work that I do, so I don't have a lot of extra time.
And it's what about, so, that you may leave and hire some staff, and you're not running on...
We'll certainly take that as advisement, and, uh, yeah, with our limited resources, this is the best that we could come up with today, I apologize.
Okay, well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a good, long talk about this.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you for...
Thanks.
Thank you for having us.
And, um, keep our cake to the fire, okay? Like, you haven't heard from us since it did, say, hey, 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 what's going on? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee.
Are you gonna leave with financials?
I don't need to leave, because we're not actually asking for money or anything, we don't, are we?
Probably would be beneficial for us to look at the...
Just wait, you have a presentation all at once, it says, here's where we're at, here's why we need it, like, generally what happens is, people come to us and say, here's what we're doing, here's why we need it, and that would probably be a good time to review everything at once?
Yeah, I guess if we had a...
It's up to you, I just, I didn't know, I didn't know what to expect or what you guys were expecting, I'm really sorry.
No, 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 no.
No, no, it was good, it was good for you to, it was, give us a lot of that information.
I think for us, like, we got, we got the letter, and we all just had like a little bit more questions, so we've all had the opportunity to ask the questions that we were thinking when we got the letter, so that's good, but I mean, moving forward with budget deliberations and stuff like that, like, more information would be, would be great.
Absolutely, I totally get that, for sure. Okay, so do you all need these, or?
If you could.
Sure?
We'll get them back to you, yeah.
Okay.
We won't be sharing them with the world.
Through that line.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need, do you need a bathroom? Do you need a bathroom to wash yourself?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we lost our audience. Shouldn't we lock the doors?
Oh, you know, yeah, gee, hope you didn't have any questions, Andrew, they're gone.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I was just listening to everybody heckled on the end of my call call, anyway.
Okay, it's just, just dawned on me that, oops!
I almost forgot about you, I'm sorry.
Not me, 4.2, payroll and accounts.
Um, as you can see, our financial report, we are requiring a resolution, um, the accounts for an amount of 2.975 million, just to give you a heads up on that, that almost made me have a heart attack also, but 1.813 is payable to Kelsey School Division, and for, or, pretty much half a million dollars is towards public schools, so when you're seeing this almost 3 million dollars, keep in mind that almost two and a half of this is to the schools.
We're the keeper of the door, right?
Yes, we are.
Time to cut a check, yeah.
And then we also have, um, payroll for four pay periods at half a million dollars, so a resolution will be required that will accept the accounts to be paid.
Okay, any discussions from anyone?
Since we're coming in to budget deliberation, have a scheduled meeting with School Division, to know what their ask is for the coming year.
We generally don't get that until January, if I'm right, to be honest with you.
But to be honest, since we're moving our budget forward, we should say, here's where we're at, when you look at a number that big, there's gotta be a way to shave a couple of mouths off, what they're, what they're spending.
Yeah, I agree.
They actually wait until we get our assessed value, and they pretty much dictate to us, I guess.
Well, I, I get that, right, but I think we need to, we need to have some discussion around that.
Sure, just remember, there's a school board by-election coming up, uh, next week, I believe.
Regardless of that, they need to know where we're at.
Yes.
Twenty-seventh, March, but...
Something like that, or 28th.
Vote at the school office.
Twenty-seventh, I think.
Twenty-seventh, and vote at the division office, I think, right? Nope, that'll be seven days from today, Thursday, 20th.
I'm sure it's the 28th.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's when, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, my head's in November, yeah, let me back up into October, days make more sense, okay, sorry. It's, I was, I was visiting with the Grey Cup yesterday, and so my mind is on November 29th, so I back in everything, 29 up to 20, that's where I got screwed up.
Do you know that was a real Grey Cup?
All right, uh, sorry, Counselor Rock.
Richard, that, that million dollar, 2 million dollar check to, to Kelsey School Division, is that payment in full, or?
We do a couple a year.
Yeah, a couple a year.
Okay, so do we have more this year to pay, or?
I would have to clarify with Julie, we usually do one right at the end of the year.
It was like 3.5 million for school taxes, and so, there'll be another one, but save them up.
Pretty sure Ian appears one or else, can I second double-check an email I do?
Right, and I, at that workshop I was at, one of the things I was told was that, uh, the town is required to pay 100% of the, the tax bill, whether we've collected it or not, by December 31st.
That's right.
So, do we have any idea what, what the shortfall number, if, if there is any, might be, on the tax collection side, or?
Just to give you a little bit of an update on that, Brian, what actually happens is every time you have properties go into tax sale, if everybody next year decided not to pay their taxes in the town of the paw, town of the paw would be required to go and borrow that money and get it from somewhere, and we would have to ensure that they get their payment, whether we get it or not, every time we have a tax sale, every time any of that stuff happens, where we do cancellations, a lot of the times, we've paid that money out already, but we're not collecting it, that affects the rest of the community. I have no idea on what the number is for, as thus far, for uncollected taxes, we can let you know that, because that's basically where it comes from.
Yeah, well, that was new, new information to me, that, that we had to pay out that, as opposed to, reasonable person would say it's a flow-through thing, if we collect it, we pass it on, but the, the law says no, by the December 31st, you pay 100% whether you've collected it or not.
Which is one of the reasons...
And so, the number would be interesting to see when it comes closer to that, I guess.
This is one of the reasons why you guys at this table have asked AMM, and a lot of the other municipalities have asked AMM, to get it off of the, the taxes, the municipal taxes, to try and look at something provincially, because we ended up pulling that top.
Right, I had heard the argument, I never understood the real effect on our budget, because it comes out of our coffers, that we've designated for other purposes.
Yep, every time we break off a tax sale, we have to pay that money out.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no, uh, there's no opportunity for a community to charge a handling fee to the school division, we just, we're just a free banker, and it's second-sat, and, and they should look after their own money, we, we have to look after ours, they should be able to look after.
And what you're saying, though, we talked about that whole process fee and everything else for the handling, and basically, what we were told was that, okay, but we would increase what we're charging you, because we have to get that money elsewhere.
Yeah.
So, it's in and out, right? So, tomato, tomato.
Well, yeah, it'd be interesting to know whether having them do their own billing would actually be a financial saving to us, as opposed to, we get to do the billing, because it seemed like, well, you're sending one anyway, but the actual impact of the law is quite different.
It's because we have first charge on, on, on the building, so...
Any other questions on, uh, 4.2?
Good luck in the elections.
Or pardon me, yeah, 4.2.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
That was pretty entertaining, can you do it again?
Yeah, yeah, just, don't tell us you're gonna do it, just do it, it's great. 4.3, AMM Annual Convention, speaking of which.
Um, as you can see, early bird fees are available until October 23rd, you save, or 28th, pardon me, you save 50 dollars for registration, this is our usual fall convention,